Welcome all and welcome to all the viewers of Channel 9 and others.
(laughing) Get invitations right?
To the Planning and Environment Committee agenda, a meeting. I've got apologies from Councillor Noon and Councillor Staines. I'll move that the apologies be accepted and seconded. Thank you, Councillor Stevenson. Any discussion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Information of agenda and the order of the agenda. I'll move that the Councillor Stevenson. Any discussion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. Declaration of interest is just for noting, you're on the way past. Bus shelter installation, thank you Michael and Tony. Welcome.
You're welcome, thank you very much. It's good to be here again.
So long since we saw you.
It is.
Any introduction or any comments to make on your report?
No, I think it should be reasonably self-explanatory. I think most of the committee sitting here were involved in previous years, so are well aware of it.
So thirteen, oh sorry, eight new bus shelters still in and five of them to be renewed?
That's correct.
How many will have seats?
They will all have seats.
Thank you. That's the only question I had.
I'll move the recommendation.
Oh, seconded.
Question, sorry, first, thank you, Ms Harson. Any of them on reserve, back onto reserve, like the back of the bus shelter is on reserve? Like, for example, Nairn Street.
The one on Nairn Street would back onto the reserve, yes.
Would back onto reserve. Okay, can I just ask another?
Because that is a shelter that's here at the moment.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep.
I mean, I am aware that there's some places where the bus shelter is on the footpath and the footpath is very narrow and then, you know, makes it very difficult to walk on the footpath with a bus shelter on there as well. If it backs onto a reserve, it does make sense to place it more onto the reserve than onto the footpath, leaving the footpath free for pedestrians. Could that not be considered?
That is something we are considering on the way through and those discussions have happened with this current programme. There is one of the shelters that's in Nussborough Rise, outside Bayfield High School. It's been positioned so that it is not impeding onto the footpath.
Great, okay, so.
It is provided for just with where the boundary is because the weather grasses and the footpath edge is not the boundary, it sits back. So we can make both things fit, but we have those discussions as we go through.
Okay, then, so likewise, okay, and so if there is any chance to not come into the footpath, then that would be taken?
We certainly do.
Good point, thank you.
Councillor Collins?
Michael, you'd be aware that when this first came up, I predict a few people could be grumpy that they took the seats out of these shelters. And there was quite a bit of publicity locally, you've probably seen it, and people putting sofas and chairs and barbecue stools and then... Have you taken note of that, you know, for future reference? At the moment, the preference seems to be to put a leaner in the shelter and then somebody complains, you come along and you put a seat in. I wondered if you took much cognizance of the public outcry that came up and thought whether or not you'd put more seats in than leaners?
Councillor Collins has answered that question already, that all of these will have seats.
I'm sorry, I've given you a couple of things. So.
That's correct?
That is correct, Mrs Chairman. I would like to say, if I may, that we didn't take any seats out. There was one situation where we forgot to put the seat back in again, but I'll put that one aside, that was my fault. But the shelters that went in last year, they were all new shelters. So where they didn't have seats, they didn't have seats before and others didn't have shelters. Might I say that of the 116 sites we went in, that we put new shelters into, we installed 14 seats at the start. We have had requests for a further 10, which have all been fitted. There is another two that are sitting here that are not an easy fit. One is which, the seat will go in when the next shelter is built, which will be in the next programme. One is we're trying to devise a mechanism, it's the one below Moana Pool on Stewart Track, we're trying to devise how you can put a seat into something that really doesn't work. And there's one other site where it just doesn't work. So we've missed out on one. But in every case, we respond to everybody that's asked and apart from those issues, we have actually facilitated what was requested.
Thank you. Councillor Boucher?
Is there any reason why they have to have concrete bases to them rather than putting the asphalt back?
The concrete basis, the foundation that keeps them up.
But the old slab that goes down, do they dig up the footpath and put the thing in and put a concrete slab down, does that have to be concrete like that?
Well, it does have to be that size for the structure to actually keep it up as a foundation for a structure. Secondly, why is it still asphalt, why is it still concrete and not asphalt? We did have one where we put it in and less than a fortnight later, when we went back to put the shelter in, the slab had disappeared because somebody came along digging up the road and didn't realise, digging up the footpath and didn't realise it was there for another reason. So we're trying to identify it as being, it's concrete, it's not asphalt, it's a foundation for the structure so that when subsequent works go on, they don't get cut up and have the structure falls over on us.
Okay, well, as long as you don't ever do them with a horrible pink-coloured concrete, I suppose the grey's better than nothing. Thank you, Councillor Boucher. Councillor Brown?
Michael, my question is really regarding the positioning of shelters and not the location, the positioning. Because there is, I've had a couple of complaints lately about bus shelters that are facing south and because they're facing south and the bus falls in on that side of the road, they really don't give the people the shelter because the southerly weather drives in. Is it possible to actually close them in on the roadside and have them exiting to the bus at the end or something like that so that they do provide the shelter that they should?
It is possible to do that if the width of the footpath is enough to do it because as soon as you enclose them in, our shelters, normally about a metre wide, are now going to need to be about two metres wide. So you're getting to the likes of the shelter in Hanover Street outside the Physio Pool. It's a very, very large structure and not many of our footpaths provide us with that width. We would like to do more, if it's physically possible, that would be something we would seriously consider.
Well, I'm not asking for a solution now, but have you just taken on board?
Appreciate me well.
Because there's at least two in Moskell that face south and there's no shelter in the Woodall on a southerly storm.
This well, Moskell doesn't get too many southerly storms.
No.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to move.
Thank you, Councillor Stevenson.
I have a question, one further question, yeah, and that is, I'm aware that for, I guess this round anyway, this, well, I assume that they will be going in as per the same look and feel as the other structures that were put in last year? The glass versions that have been called Copenhagen-style?
The yes and no. The drive to the mare, the one that's going to Nairn Street does look along the same lines, but it is a different structure to actually fit that size there. There is four wooden shelters being installed.
Okay.
They are the residual four that have been sitting in stock with Regional Council and they've asked for them to be installed.
Okay.
Two of those are going into Fearefield.
So, Mr Madam Chair, that means that they can be paid on your rules?
That offer has been talked about with, keep them hidden, beautiful already.
Yeah, that's fine, that's the benefit of wooden ones.
Or the fee.
No, no, when they're murreled, they're great.
Thank you.
And the other two?
Who's doing the painting?
Where are the other two going? The other two wooden ones, do you know?
The other two wooden ones are going into Forbury Road, Forbury, no, not Forbury Road, Victoria Road outside to doing that intermediate and they're going side by side.
Ah, yeah, okay, thank you. No further questions? I thank you, Councillor Stevenson, I wasn't at Councillor's hearing, Councillor Woodall had already moved in seconded. Thank you, then. Any discussion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, any thanks? Thank you, gentlemen. Next one is second generation district plan update and principles for councillor involvement. Just note that Councillor Brown has withdrawn on this matter. Hello, Dr Johnson and Mr Freeland.
Anna, would you like to talk to your reporter? Anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is that I just want to say that we did have our first workshop on the 2GP yesterday, which we were really pleased with, but after considering the pace and what we were able to get through in that time, I'll just note that, I'll probably look to add in a few more workshop slots into the programme that's outlined in this report. Also, just a minor clarification in the conclusion, which I don't have the page number for, but it says that the prior report was in October, but it was actually in fact in September of last year. And then, thirdly, I just have a clarification matter on the principles for councillor involvement. Number 10, item B, where it says, having an interest, e.g. financial or indirect, that is not in common with all landowners or rate payers, the correct words. This is essentially a summary of the legislation, the words used in the Act are the public. But just to clarify that a little bit further, it's not every member of the public, it is a group within it. So essentially, if you were to vote on zoning your own property, that would be considered greater than the public. But if you were to vote on the residential zone rules that may affect your own personal property, that would not be considered greater than the public because it affects all residential zone people. So it is about some group within the public. So that's, those two matters of clarification and I have asked Paul and Debbie to join me in case there's any particular questions about components of the work programme that need to be answered.
Thank you. So in, just in order to clarify this, and I think it possibly needs it, your recommendation for, recommendation two would be that the committee approve the program process and more detailed principles as amended, because you've now amended them?
Yes.
Yeah, for councillor involvement with the 2GP. Just wanted to clarify that we, that there is some link through there to motion. Any questions? Well done. Anyone like to have moved a question? Sorry, I've got. Thank you.
Well, I mean, or maybe it's to make me comment. No, I'll leave it as a comment and you find someone to move it.
So someone like to move, thank you, Councillor. I'm happy to move.
I'll second you.
I'm just wondering for clarity, and again, these are readable by themselves, whether the mover is happy to put as the technical committee, the chair and deputy chair of the hearings panel and the chair of P&amp;E, just because I think they should stand on themselves, not be, have to refer back to the report?
Yeah, happy with that amendment.
That's, I'm not trying to change the input, I'm just trying to make sure that we can link to it. Okay, discussion on the motion? I'm not taking it, I'm asking for discussion on the, on the motion first.
Well, I wanted to discuss them off, if we're taking them separately.
I normally, what we normally have is discussion, I thought, and then take them separately, but I'm happy to take them separately and do the discussion up.
Have they all been moved?
They have been moved and seconded with slight amendments. Okay, motion, the first motion, which I'm just waiting to hear back, apologies. Thank you. First motion, so that's, we note the completion of the issues and options list in the updated programme for preparation of the 2GP plan.
Just briefly speaking to this.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just would like to acknowledge the work of staff on this phase. I think that the feedback that I've had from stakeholders today has been that the process has been really good, it's been really positive and staff have been really open to receiving feedback right after the close of that phase. So I think that's really good and it's gone as well for the process to come if that approach is going to be continued, which this report seems to indicate that it will.
Thank you. Any further debate or discussion, I'll put the motion on, the recommendation on, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, recommendation two, which has the added words of as amended, the detailed principles as amended for councillor involvement in the 2GP in there. Any, would you like to speak to that?
I'm happy for it to.
Councillor Stevenson?
Oh, yeah, I just would like to say that I enjoyed the workshop that we had, I thought it was very productive. And I think being on the spatial plan, these workshops are very, very important, that they happen reasonably frequently because, and that there's actual real words, because you talk about something in principle, but when you look and you confront the real words that go out to the public can quite often change things. It's just devils in the detail. It's just one or two words can change the meaning and open up all sorts of loopholes. So I think that those workshops are going to be critical and that councillors should make the effort to attend them.
Thank you. Councillor Banis?
On principles for councillor involvement, bottom 5.5, it says that councillors are expected to take an active interest role as politicians to have input into the plan development process, and it goes on to make another point. My question is, is there anything actively being done to ensure that all councillors are actually able to attend the workshops and meetings? Because we quite often miss quite a number of them. And perhaps the mayor may have a suggestion or someone else has a suggestion for maximising the number of councillors that actually attend these workshops?
Well, you know, I'm just wondering, because you may want to answer how long a notice you've given of these workshops, appreciating you're just about to add some more because of our debate over them, but.
I usually try to book them about three, perhaps or more in advance. So they've, these ones have been in there for quite a while and the July ones are already booked in, so, but I'll add the other ones. So I guess it's a bit hard, like with this set, that where you realise you don't have enough time. And I think the lesson learnt is why I'm now going to book in extra ones for July, even if we don't use them all, because it's better safe than sorry. In terms of the timing, I usually check in with, you know, with Sandy and Vivian to try to look at a good time and go through the council diary. But if people want to communicate directly with me about saying, please not on a Monday morning or whatever, I'm happy to build that into how I look for the times.
Any other comment on that? I'll put that motion all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. Number three, recommendation number three, would you like to talk to that as mover?
I'm happy, just to let it stand.
Any other discussion? Councillor Stevenson?
Okay, with this matter, I mean, with the change of the elections and those positions may mean different people, so, you know, and that these technical positions will carry on in the next round, you know, if this trade.
Everything starts afresh after the, in the next round, is my understanding, every working party has their.
This is just from now until the elections. So, okay, so we know who the councillors on this technical panel will be and that they are to look at procedural issues and the workability of it. So, you know, so I'm not going to die in a ditch about this, I mean, I'm sure the three, the three people will in fact do their best and are actually very good at that sort of procedural type thing. What worries me is that councillors of those particular positions do come from more rural areas and because of, well, because I wish to speak on this, I wish to speak.
Point of order, Madam Chair. For what, would Councillor Stevenson understand that I've been elected in the Greater Dunedin City Rural Ward, one of 11 councillors, because I may have an interest in the rural, it doesn't drop away my interest in the greater city? That's the fact of where the election is based from.
Can I come in here?
I'm not quite sure how to deal with this point of order. I'm, well, I understand.
My challenge, Madam Chair, is the three nominated people are rural councillors. Incorrect.
But, and the question, well, what I'm worried about is what you actually want me to do about this, is do you want to?
I'd like Councillor Stevenson to acknowledge that we are three experienced councillors, elected, two on a rural basis, one as an urban basis. That is the facts.
Continue, I will cover that, okay? Like, two councillors are elected from rural wards. The third one is elected as a whole and happens to live in a rural area.
No, Madam Chair. Correction, Madam Chair, again, I live in the Greater Dunedin City, I do not live in a rural area. Brighton is part of the urban city.
Can I just, I'm going to ask that the comment actually disus, this has got nothing to do with where we're elected from or, perversely, I've lived in the centre of the urban Dunedin much more years than I've lived in the rural area, so I'm not quite sure if my brain was turned off for my first 30 years or not. But that isn't the point. The point here is that we're, when we're elected, for the purposes of elections, the wards count, that is the only time they count. We are wards, we are councillors of the whole city during our time on council.
Can I just speak to this?
No, you can't, well, if you want to make the inference that we're rural based or in that therefore we have a bias, this is a, this is a report on technical issues about testing the usability of the thing, it's not to get to the actual content.
While talking about the technicalities of it, I do believe that the councillors, that this motion suggests will be on hand and I will be voting for it, will be people that have got the skills and the knowledge of it. And yes, they do have the whole of city at heart. This, however, is about a district plan for the whole city and what I am using this opportunity is to emphasise to them, if they are listening, that it is very, very important that you have to have that whole of city concept as you make the decisions that are technical ones and that you look at the entire city, not just simply one part of the city when you go through these technical things. And it's the fundamental thing that makes a district plan work, you have to see the city as a whole.
Madam Chair, I request a right response.
You may.
For 15 years, I've had the privilege of being the chair of the planning, the chair of the planning committee. I have sat on a significant number of consents across the whole city. I was involved along with Councillor Brown in the resolution of the last district plan and something like 200 projections plus that we resolved. I would suggest that our experience suggests that we represent the whole city from all aspects.
I'm now going to put that motion through, no wish for any further debate, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is the review of freedom camping policy and camping control bylaw 2011. Paula and Pauline, welcome. H I, can I just get? Now, Paula, would you like to give some background to this because I've had the pleasure of having some time with you today, but just the background and the context, because this has changed because of the Freedom Camping Act, which came in after the last policy was adopted.
Yes, through the chair, just as by way of context, the council's current freedom camping policy and camping control bylaw was put in place in the lead-up to the regular cup 2011. The decision-making in both respect of the policy and bylaw was made under the Love Government Act general provisions. As I recall, midway, well through that process, the government announced the new freedom camping bill, now the freedom camping act. I recall it was actually the day before we heard our submissions, so it was, it was a, and we weren't the only council put out in that regard, it was a timing matter. In a nutshell, what happened was we were able to, through a submission to the select committee, get our bylaw recognised in that act for a transitional period of one year and that was linked to the ability to give the instant fines for the bylaw breaches. And that expired at the end of August 2012 and we'd always been aware that we had that for one year, that transitional provision, and we're looking to do some kind of review to see what, where we go to next with this. In order to put reinstate what we current, what we had at the moment, it's not quite that simple, the new freedom camping act does set, as explained in the report, a very high bar for prohibiting and restricting camping under that act. Certainly, there's more tests around that than in the general provisions in the Love Government Act. There's also a number of watchdog organisations, most notably the Motor Caravan Association, who are keeping a close eye on councils and how they're using those new provisions. Therefore, in that context, when we looked at both the scope of the policy review and in terms of the regulatory tools to accompany that, we, 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 because we waited a little while, we were fortunate enough to, in a fit from other councillors' experiences and also amount of good practice and legal opinions that are sort of out in the sector, has created a bit of confusion and we are hoping that what we've come up with kind of strikes a balance and avoids some risks for council by taking a very, not by avoiding, taking a very broad brush approach to sort of prohibitions. I'll just run through the.
We'll do questions after you've finished, yeah.
So the, the review team, in its initial discussions and with each other in-house and also in the consultation that we've undertaken with number of organisations and through the people's panel and with community board representatives, there does seem to be quite a convergence that became quite apparent that actually the community's tolerance for camping was, was higher than perhaps we had recognised in 2011. Of course, back in 2011, everyone was anticipating all these visitors and people perhaps envisaging wards of campers kind of on the horizon coming towards us, so it was a little bit of trying to sort of crystal ball gaze at that time. So, yes, the information coming back to us from a number of sources did all seem to have this common thread about sort of a high level of tolerance, less, less looking towards sort of banning and fining approach, more let's welcome people, let's provide some clear places for them to go and let's manage those practical things, most commonly it's toilets, rubbish, dump stations, signage, clear information for people, whether that's through the brochures and the website and other potential ways of communicating. And that became more the focus of what we're putting forward. So on that, on that, in that regard, we've, in terms of the policy proposal, we're just looking to sort of slightly extend the provision that we have in the existing policy, which is to maintain, retain the ability for fully self-contained camper vans to stay for the two nights on sealed or areas to decide for parking on public land, but also to provide two specific sites on a trial, two-year top trial period for the non-self-contained campers that was sort of undertaken with, on the advice of the people and for the community boards in those areas, essentially where people are actually going now and they do have existing toilet facilities either right there or very close by. And we're also looking at doing some implementation projects to do a quite thorough review of the, the information and facilities that are just around at the moment to make sure that it's clear and what we're telling people is actually what they're seeing on the ground and that's going to take just a little bit of work to be able to look at that so that we don't get that situation where people are coming into the eyesight saying, where can I camp and not having a very clear response available. Another, another aspect is that we've had some discussions with the Department of Conservation. You may be aware that Nogby and the district is there a sort of one of these basic style, Department of Conservation style camping grounds and that has been recognised for some time, I understand, as something that may be lacking and may put pressure on other, on other areas for camping. We've had some initial discussions, they've gone very well. We've been advised of the regulations in terms of camping ground regulations, there's a special proviso for, a more relaxed regulatory sort of proviso for those type of camping grounds, which looks like it could work and we've had a look at the Department of Conservation's service levels and they've actually got four different types within the basic style camping ground. So that's a, that's a, we're proposing that and more work be done into looking into feasibility of that style of facility within the district and partnership with the Department of Conservation. Which takes me to the actual bylaw. We've actually, we are proposing a new bylaw, but we are. Um, we've actually, we are proposing a new bylaw, but we are proposing to reduce it significantly in scope. Um, we're retaining the existing prohibited sites, which is, um, Pukapurua Tarawa here to council-controlled land here, um, all the, all the city cemeteries. And we're also, um, proposing that all our scenic reserves with the exception of, uh, Teteri Mauana scenic reserve, Putting Island, which is physically inaccessible, uh, be put into the category of, uh, restricted, which means basically they're prohibited except with a special permit. Uh, and that is really to cater for people like scouts or other people who might want to go into those more sort of, um, wilderness areas for that sort of experience. And we want to be able to provide for that rather than ban it completely. Uh, other, um, in terms of other, um, behaviours or problems that are associated with camping, for example, littering, antisocial behaviour, um, waste, uh, et cetera, we, we're pretty confident that they can be dealt with with, uh, the general, uh, general enforcement powers. We've got, um, a number of ways of, of being able to deal with that, um, outside of this, an actual freedom camping bylaw. Uh, and importantly, we're also proposing to change the name of the policy from freedom camping to responsible camping. Um, it's come about from a couple of reasons. One is freedom camping means different things to different people and there's actually probably, uh, it seems that there's actually very few people who, if you ask them, are you a freedom camper, would actually say yes, even though we may think of them as that. Um, and, and also it's about that message and, um, the, the idea that we thought was that, you know, um, we want to, we, we expect people to be responsible and give them, give them the expectation to live up to that. Um, so that's, that's our proposal.
Thank you. Questions, councillor Butcher?
I was just gonna put my name forward for the panel, Madam Chair, if you want me on.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Stevenson?
Um, it refers in three to attachment five, but do you mean attachment six? Referring to attachment five. Attachment five is a map.
Where are you referring to?
Not page number.
Well, on the recommendations. Number three.
Yes.
Is set up in attachment five.
Attachment five is page six point.
Three one, which is attachment six.
No.
Attachment five.
Five is six point two five, isn't it?
Yes, you're correct, it should be attachment six.
What, what number is it, six point two five? Like I haven't got a number on mine, I've lost the number.
Three one?
Yeah, what's the six point two five? So God attachment five, I haven't got a number on it.
That's six point three one.
No, what's it?
That seems to be attachment four, but it's the, the.
It's gone, okay.
And it's attachment four? So attachment four. Okay, it's two nine. It needs to be read here, so like, if we maybe change the word number three to attachment.
No, sorry, attachment six point two nine is attachment five. It's the one that says freedom camping in Dunedin.
Two nine.
It's a pa- pa- probably a pamphlet. That's a numbering, by the staple, it's very hard to see. Thank you, councillor McTavish.
Uh, yeah, but the proposed, it's still correct that, um, the number in three needs to be changed to read as set out in attachment six, which is the new proposed bylaw.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm, sorry, I was frost about the, frost purposes as to which page we're talking about as opposed to number of course.
Okay, with, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, with public place under the interpretation, because this is really important. Well, it's a place which is under the control of the council and is open to and being used by the public, um, but it's for parking. I mean, it doesn't mean any piece of grass reserve, you know, um. If, if I were to have my camper van, I wouldn't be able to, to park on the grass reserve. It's not legally normally over the car park. Shouldn't that say, um, means a place under the control of the council that is open to and available for the public for parking? I mean, it doesn't mean that you can just park willy-nilly anywhere you like in the middle of Logan Park, does it?
Sorry, can you repeat me to the page number you're looking at?
I'm looking at page six point three one, attachment six. Interpretation, public place. Okay. There it says means a place under the control of council, okay, which means like the middle of Logan Park, hypothetically. And that's open to or being used by the public. I feel like if it said for car parking, it would make it clearer that you can't just park any odd where.
They all say and, takes you down to sea, includes a road, so does that solve the question?
I, I think the issue here possibly is that under the policy, so look at page six point two five, we've actually got parking regulations which cover the point you're making, but it doesn't translate into the bylaw.
And that's because the bylaw isn't, isn't allowing for camping, it's restricting and prohibiting it. So the actual distinction between sealed surfaces or grass is not relevant in the bylaw as proposed.
Well, that's right, the bylaw, so what you're saying is the bylaw only deals with prohibited areas and the scenic reserves?
That's correct.
The policy, which is where they, where camper vans go and park, is in the policy and that's under nine on page six point two five, which may or may not be better read as part of five, which was discussed on paper. But see, if you look at, the policy deals with where self-contained campers can go.
Okay, well, I'll let the others ask the question.
Yeah, no, but that, does that, uh, doesn't answer your question because the bylaw does not deal with self-contained campervans. Is that allowed?
The bylaw doesn't deal with where, where campers are allowed, it deals with where they're prohibited and restricted.
Thank you, councillor Collins.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, the first thing, I'm very impressed with the report. Must, must be a lot of fun doing this one, I'm sure. But there's a lot of work going into this and, and it's good to see it. Um, look, can I ask you a question and, and then, oh, it's just another point. Um, you're often trying to time, the only word I can think without degrading anyone is gypsy campers who, uh, come to town and park in a city street. And apparently as long as they're warranted and registered, they can actually do that completely. And it's only if they cause a nuisance health-wise probably, but they can park there for three months if they wish. Did we look at this in the overall picture or not?
I don't, I don't recall that particular, um, example coming up in this, in this particular review, um.
I know, it comes up from time to time.
If they, yeah.
Talking about radio and things like that. All right, so we didn't really cover that. Um, but I also did like, and I might have missed the, the, the way you were putting it, um, the idea of responsible camping. I mean, to me, if you could do away with the word freedom and replace it with responsible, that's a jolly good idea, suggestion you're going to make or is that?
Uh, no, it is incorporated into the community. Yes, yeah.
And I think if that's adopted or the sooner we can, the better because it's all in the public perception, isn't it? Yeah, so that's a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Collins. Councillor McTavish? Yeah, sorry, councillor Thompson, I knew there was someone first, sorry, call it first.
No, no, you go.
Councillor.
Just, um, simply, I, I just wonder why, um, McCandrie Bay Reserve car park and Ocean View Reserve car park, why not Vauxhall Boating Club, which strikes me as being essentially exactly the same. It has toilet facilities there, um, having overlooked it for twenty years, um, it's regularly used by camper vans and it's never been an issue. Um, and I just wonder why you would leave it out?
It, it, it certainly came up in discussion. Um, we, we decided to just go for one site and each of the, both those key areas, one on the peninsula. There was.
Doesn't this allow effectively a city-based one for those that don't want to go further down? And it just seems to me that spreading the load makes some sense.
There was certainly some discussion about whether to have one or two in the, in the general vicinity.
Would we not be be there to go out for consultation with all three rather than add one in after consultation so that people are aware and can make?
Well, that's fine, I'll just.
Certainly is it, uh, add one in now, then, then later.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Um, can I just ask, is the Vauxhall one you're talking about, is that just a car park or is it a loading ramp?
Uh, it's, it's quite extensive sealed area with facilities, it's got, um, picnic facilities, it has a toilet there. I, I believe we own it, it's not the, owned by the bo- by the boating club. And it does have a boat ramp there, correct, but that's a very small part of it.
Okay, oh, that's fine, as long as we weren't going to be camped out from using it for what it's for.
Through to Jack, that is a toilet plan, isn't it?
Yes, it is, yes.
Just as a medical.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you'd like, okay. Um, any, so councillor McTavish?
Yeah, well, I was interested in the, um, comments about the discussions that you've been having with Dock. Is the intention that Dock would create a camping ground or is the intention that we would supply land and it would be branded a Dock camping ground? Or is the specifics not into the two years?
Through the Chair, um, the specifics haven't been really answered. We've looked at sites, um, so it's actually quite, you know, fundamentally looking at where that was possible. Uh, sites that would attract the responsible camper that doesn't want to stay on the camping ground. Uh, we looked at the possibilities they have and ours and it would be a combined effort to do it. We haven't got into the details of the partnership, what it would look like, but there's a, um, there was, um, verbally a lot of, um, commitments spoken to each other to, to see if we can get this done and, uh, yeah, it was a very positive approach from both sides.
Uh, and will you have any idea, I'm just thinking, the outcome of those discussions may have some influence on the way that people respond to the proposals under this, um, proposed bylaw. Um, is there any indication of how quickly those discussions may be able to be progressed or, um, or any indicat- yeah, I guess any indication of when we might have some firm idea or proposal?
We've proposed tying the, uh, I guess, um, review of that feasibility report for the basic camping ground and with the review of those two or three proposed, uh, sites so that they can be looked as, as a whole because there may be one, you know, one may cancel out the need for the other. So, so that ties us into that 2015, sort of two, two seasons from now timeframe.
Hmm, hmm, okay, all right. Thank you.
Just one last, oh, sorry, councillor Menjus?
Sorry, just one last, small question. On six point three, a self-contained vehicle is to sign that have a minimum of three days without requiring any external services or discharges. Why is it then that we're wanting to move them on after two days? Would, would three days be a problem given that we like to encourage people to, especially if they have wonderful weather and find some excellent other things happening here? Wouldn't it be nice if they had an extra day?
We have basically retained what was there existing in terms of the two, the two days. Um, we haven't had any suggestion of three days. Um, that is taken from that in its standard, so that's, uh, you know, what's being applied throughout the country, or to point it to that standard for self-containment. Um, so it's possi- it's possible.
Do you see any downside of altering it to three days?
Can, can I assist on that? My understanding is that the third day they would probably have to go to a site which, or at least move to get to a dumping site and water because that is the third day. So you could park up on a Tuesday and still be there on Thursday afternoon, but your capacity and your motorhome would actually be at the limit potentially. That's my, from the previous hearings, that's why that date was chosen.
Okay, I, I just don't see it as reading that way. It says a minimum of three days without requiring any external services or discharges.
That's a standard certification of, uh, the Zealand Marang Authority.
Sure.
But you're.
Given that's standard, why would we want to restrict?
You could be there for the three days under this rule. You could get ride on a Tuesday morning and leave on Thursday evening, which is two nights, but you'd, but you need to go to a popular site where you can dump. These sites are not dump sites.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. Um, councillor, I'm just gonna ask a question, I have first if that's a bit. Um, the question I have is, um, this is a question for clarity. The fact that part of Waterhole Gardens, for example, is not, um, a scenic reserve means that we could in effect, um, park a motorhome there, but of the sort that we've self-contained, but you can't, we have got other rules which preclude, um, camping in a tent, for example. That's correct. So I, I just wanted to make sure that although this deals with clarity as much as we can, there are other rules on other parts of our reserves like playgrounds and other things that may preclude camping. This isn't all encompassing.
The policy, um, outlines the, the, the areas and timeframes which we are saying people can camp in.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it, it doesn't go into a lot of detail about the other restrictions, there are a number of other restrictions.
Yes, correct. That, so, as, while this is, will move step towards clarity, it isn't the whole package and the other package will be part of that implementation plan and package that will come later.
In terms of getting the key information as to what people need.
That's correct, yes. Thank you, councillor Stevenson.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, freedom camping in Dunedin pamphlet, okay, which is actually really nice and simple. Well done. And I'm looking at the map on the back of it with the loos, okay, you've got the little boys and the girls symbols everywhere. And, but some of these are not reticulated, like some of them we need to pack the sewage up and pump it out and bring the water in to flush the loo. And, um, Toroni Reserve is one that's not reticulated, but I think there is a few others, aren't there? Like, um, I don't think Butting's Crossing's reticulated and there's probably a few others. So do you, can you tell me which ones are not reticulated?
Not, 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 I'm sure of my answer now, no, okay, no.
Okay, well, I know Toroni Reserve is definitely not reticulated because we have a bit of issues there. So like, um, I'll wait till it's moved and I can speak.
Yeah, this is, this is not going to be the presentation that we use, this is now becoming obsolete, that page.
There will be a new version.
Yeah, there'll be, yes, there, there will be a new version, but it will be with a whole lot more information.
Um, not about the toilets, but, um, we have found out that on six point two five there's a slight, um, mistake in the policy. Um, point three, six point two five, point three. The council encourages campers to stay at licensed camping grounds but recognises that this does not always meet visits, meet as all visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Good eyes, Tony. Okay, um, anyone would like to move a motion of any sort? Thank you, councillor Butcher. Can we just have some clarity first, sorry, um, in the motion as to who you'd be putting up or suggesting for the hearings panel?
Oh, yourself, Madam Chair, um, because Chair may, and anyone else would like to volunteer?
Okay, um, the hearings panel last time, and I just, uh, it's, it doesn't have to be any of them, but just for the committee's noting or was Hawani Lansbury from the Itagua Central Peninsula Board?
Itagua Peninsula Community Board.
I don't know about him then. Um, uh, myself and councillor McTavish, that's just for noted. Um, so you're proposing yourself, myself and one other?
Yeah, I'd like to see someone else wants to go on or what?
Um, Hawani is available if we needed him, but that's, that's, he, he doesn't, it doesn't matter either way. Any, any seconded or mover?
Well, we're not clear if Hawani's not on, who, who would? Councillor Butcher, councillor McTavish and you say?
Well, it may be useful in a community board representation in which case, um, I'm, I mean, I'm quite happy to stand aside.
So, yeah, I appreciate that, I was trying to get some clarity in, in second. And plus Hawani and myself. Um, you're happy to second that?
I think you should have someone from the, um, from the northern area as well, from, from the Waikato City Board, the, the community board. It's unbalanced there.
Andrew would be good.
I'm.
We don't have to specifically name them, but I think that would be.
At a community board level or are you talking about a, a councillor level?
I'm, I'm talking about, uh, community board level.
Community board level?
Yeah.
Okay, so is that going to be Chalmers or is it going to be Waikato City Coast?
But we're curious.
I mean, I think.
Why not, why not to Northern, that's what I say, a community board member that represents the outside world?
I think that from recollection at the last hearing, it was Saddle Hill which, um, S-. I think that from recollection at the last hearings, it was Saddle Hill which were having quite, but quite a lot of issues. It was certainly Otago Peninsula and Saddle Hill which were the two strongest submitters, greatest issue.
Okay. An opportunist that a community board being appointed by all the, all the community boards, that they, so they talk to all of the community boards. So we asked the community chairs to get together and to...
A nomination for a...
A nomination for the community boards. So myself, Fliss and, yeah. Is that okay with you as mover?
Yeah, I just, I've got a lot of experience from being chairing of coastal journeys strategies, so I'd like to bring that to this hearing as a volunteer myself, which also includes all the Saddle Hill problems. So I don't understand those issues, so I'm concerned about that.
Well, so you're happy for the motion to read, appointed councillor Butcher, councillor Wilson and a representative chosen by the chairs of the community boards.
Where the council, yeah.
Okay.
An option.
Thank you.
You may just like to specify community board chairs or... Because that would, if it was the community boards, you'd have to wait for a whole meeting round from every community board. So if you do community board chairs, that's...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be one of the chairs, but it has to be a community board member. Yeah, okay. I think we've, I'm sure Lyn's got that. We've got a move and seconded. Any discussion or debate? Do you want to talk to that, Fliss?
I don't know.
Any discussion, councillor McTavish?
Yeah, I, I can understand why this has been approached the way that it has. I do have some concerns that it is very complicated and if I was a member of or a visitor, I wouldn't have the foggy as much as scenic reserve was. You know, I probably wouldn't even have one in my home country. So it's, it's going to be a matter of really clear information and I'm not, I'm not confident that we're there yet. I think that this, I mean, obviously this isn't the comms information, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a very complex set of rules and as councillor Wilson has suggested, there are other rules sitting in other documents and, yeah, councillor, I, I remember there was a lot of reading associated with this and a lot of getting up to speed before we could have anything that resembled a useful conversation about it. So, yeah, I just would really reiterate the importance of simplicity in, in, in the document that finally comes back to council.
Thank you councillor Stevenson.
Yeah, I'm happy for us to go out for consultation. I still scratch my head about it a wee bit. This little flyer that people used to get, I think is very good. But you look at it and you go, oh, look here, all these public loo's which are very handy to use rather than using our self-contained, they will pop off and use public toilets. I would like to think that our parks and recreation staff or those that are, that manage public toilets can have a little think about, we have excluded Taroa, Taroa Head because of the lack of facilities there, but Taroni Reserve is actually really strained in the public toilet facilities there. Even though you do have a, a self-contained camper van, you do send your family to go and use the public toilets and save on the capacity on your own facilities and it does really stretch them. There may be other parts that staff may look at, go, they're also under strain. And maybe we should look at this, you know, the areas that we've excluded and say, look, if it hasn't got reticulated loo's, we'd rather you keep away from those spots. But I think at this stage, it's for the public to submit and even our own wastewater staff to think about those issues. If it's not an issue, then that's fine.
Councillor Collins?
Thank you. Just one or two in maps and things like that. I had a, a fairly intense amount of work a few years ago in getting some, solving where these motor vehicles could go to unload, if you pardon the expression. And people at BP Cumberland Street South became an angel in disguise really and they invested a heck of a lot of money, thousands and thousands on agreeing to take the pressure off. And John will know that there was a lot of pressure down Porta Valogie, right back to councillor McBay's day, and they really decided to take it on as a project. So you'd need to make, well, I would hope you would make it quite clear. You see the little symbols that just says some of these other places are nothing more than parks, whereas I think the Shell and Cumberland Street. I know, I don't know, the others may have it as well, but I, I know that they did put a lot of money into providing that facility. A lot of people came to town they didn't know, so, yeah.
Thank you. The only question I have is, and, and, I'm sorry, I should have raised it under questions, but requirement to revoke this bylaw, hasn't this bylaw, our existing bylaw been rescinded under the Act as opposed to being required revocation in terms of the wording of the recommendation?
No, it hasn't.
Oh, it wasn't?
It's just fallen out of that transitional period for the, for the ability to give instant fines.
Okay, so it's still current. Thank you. I'm now going to put the motion all in favour. Please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry. Thank you very much. The last only agenda is notification of general items for consideration by the chair. councillor Hudson?
There's been quite a lot of publicity recently about skateboarding in the city and one thing that we're falling down on is that people do not understand under our bylaws where the no skateboarding areas are. We used to have them quite clearly marked on the curb edges and with notices, particularly for Morri Place and the Octagon, but over the years, those symbols appear to have worn off and there's a lack of knowledge about where you're not allowed to skateboard. And I'd just like an update on where we are with those restrictions and what attempts we've made to clearly identify the areas.
Thank you. The skateboarding bylaw is still in effect. I have done, and I should have addressed this earlier, but my understanding is that skateboarding and use of mobility scooters amongst other things are being considered for review, review of policy generally because they're as much bigger than just skateboarding now. There are other issues of the size of footpaths and everything and that is being looked at, but probably not at the high priority. The other issue you, I think, looked at was on what is now almost private land. You had another issue on a car park, I think. Car park in...
I had an issue on skateboarders using the Wilson's car park in Morri Place. It's very attractive to take the lift up and start at the top and skateboard all the way through and down that into the Octagon. And I'm not sure whether that's permissible or not.
Ingenious is an interesting thing. Thank you. Look, that's where I think it is at. It's not, it hasn't been seen as a high priority, but there has been work done in looking at how we use our footpaths generally. And actually with the innovations with quiet streets, have they come into some thinking over that as well. But I appreciate where you're at, your concerns about that marking. councillor Wetherall?
Yeah, an opportunity for staff to investigate the commercial reality now that council, committee meetings and council is being promoted on channel nine, to have some advertising forums or events that the council has operated. A better opportunity to hold a flag up and say something else the council's doing or have a little rotating sign. I'm serious.
I'm, I think you've already started with your laptop, sir. Right in, right in the script.
I'm telling you, but I'm serious. We're now live on, fighters and council use the intermediate opportunities, promote some of the activities we have, even with some pictures of our Facebook, our website and all the other things.
Thank you.
To promote what we're doing.
Doctor Bitrose has taken a note of that.
I'm sure she has. I'm tongue-in-cheek, but I think it's...
No.
We must always look at an opportunity. And I'm talking about not revenue gaining, but awareness of what the council's involved in.
I'm not sure that your surf life saving outfit would necessarily be seen as the attire that you want to wear around the...
Definitely like that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and thank you for contributions today. Be you well.